Good morning and welcome to the meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System on September 12, 2025 at 10:00 a.m. in the Cordell Hall Building, Senate Room 1. Welcome each of you to today's meeting and appreciate your presence. The first thing we're going to do today, having called the meeting to order, is we're going to swear in several new members of the Board of Trustees, and I would ask that Members Zach Edmiston, Chief Jason Head, Lieutenant Wayne Jackson, Anthony Haynes, and Patsy Moore meet me right down here in front. Okay, we're going to do the swearing in down there. All right, with that, I'll ask Director of the Assistant and Secretary to the Board, Jamie Wayman CPA, to call the roll call of the members. Mr. Archer. Mr. Edmiston. Mr. Haynes. Mr. Head. Lieutenant Jackson.
Here.
Treasurer Lillard.
Here.
Director Long.
Present.
Ms. Moore. Commissioner Williams.
Present.
And I'm present as well. You have 10 present. All right, we have a quorum of the board present, and the Chair declares such. Next item is item number three on our agenda, which is the minutes of the June 6, 2025 meeting. Are there any comments, additions, deletions, et cetera, with respect to those proposed minutes that are in your packet? If not, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve saying. Is there a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second, Commissioner. All right, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll do this by voice vote. All those members in favor of the minutes signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the minutes are approved. Next item is item number four, which is confirmation of appointments to the Investment and Administrative Committees of the Board. As many of you know, the Board is organized around various committees to expedite its work, and we have appointments to several of those here today. On the Investment Committee, as Chair, I've appointed and recommend Anthony Haynes of the Tennessee Municipal League to serve on the Investment Committee. With respect to the Administrative Committee of the Board, we have five vacancies to be filled on that committee, and the Chair recommends the following members to serve on the Administrative Committee. First is Mr. Zach Edmiston, State Employee Representative, also Ms. Duwana Haggard, Middle Tennessee Teacher Representative, Chief Jason Head, Public Safety Officer Representative, Lieutenant Wayne Jackson, who's a State Employee Representative, and Ms. Patsy Moore, who's a Retired Teacher Representative. This requires confirmation by the Board, and the Chair will move to confirm each of those appointments. Is there a second for the motion? All right, we have a second, all right. Any discussion on the motion to confirm those appointments? All right, seeing that, I'll ask the Secretary to call the roll on this item, okay, if you would please. Mr. Archer. Mr. Edmiston.
Yes.
Mr. Haynes. Chief Head.
Yes.
Lieutenant Jackson.
Yes.
Treasurer Lillard.
Yes.
Director Long.
Aye.
Ms. Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
I vote ayes, well, you have 10 ayes. All right, the item is approved. Congratulations to each of those members and your willingness to serve on those committees of the Board. All right, the next item is item number five on our agenda, which is Board of Trustees Committee Reports. The Administrative Committee is headed by Mr. Wayman, so I'll call on him for that committee's report.
Thank you, Treasurer. So the Administrative Committee met this morning. We did not have a quorum. As you can see, we just had five members assigned to that committee, but we did talk about the town of Ridgely participating in, or seeking participation in TCRS, and we'll talk about that further in a minute. We also talked about the TCRS actuarial audit that was performed on the June 30, 2024, actuarial valuations. We had an update of the Eris and data management projects that are currently going on, and we also had a presentation by both Financial Empowerment staff and TCRS operational staff about the operations of both Financial Empowerment and TCRS. And that was a report of the Administrative Committee.
All right, any questions, Mr. Wayman, about the Administrative Committee report? All right, seeing none, the next item is item 5B, the Report of the Audit Committee. Secretary Hargit, who is Chair of the Audit Committee, was not here today, and the committee was chaired by Earl Pierce, our Director of Internal Audit. I'll just briefly give an overview of that, that meeting. I was present during that, those proceedings. The committee met and reviewed various reports prepared by the staff on issues that are currently pending for the audit staff, and discussed audit procedures and answered questions that the staff members may have had or others may have had in regard to that. Are there any questions about the Audit Committee meeting? All right, seeing none, we'll go to the next item, which is item six, Political Subdivision Seeking Participation. Mr. Wayman will be recognized for that item.
Thank you, Treasurer. On page 25 of your packet, there is a request by the town of Ridgely seeking participation in the Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System. The town has 13 employees. They're seeking to join the hybrid plan without cost controls. They will be offering cost of living benefits. They will not allow part-time employees to participate in the retirement plan. Their initial employer rate is 2.3%, with employees contributing 5%. They're not offering any prior service, therefore there's no additional liability to pay upfront. State Comptroller's Office reviewed their financial condition and indicated they are capable of funding the retirement costs. The hybrid plan requires participation in a deferred compensation plan, and the town will be using a nationwide 401(k) plan for that purpose. I recommend to the Board for approval of participation of the town of Ridgely in TCRS effective October 1, 2025.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Wayman to admit the town originally on the basis that he described. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion about that item? All right, seeing none, I'll ask Mr. Wayman to call the roll. Mr. Archer. Mr. Edmiston.
Yes.
Mr. Haynes. Chief Head.
Yes.
Lieutenant Jackson. Treasurer Lillard.
Yes.
Director Long.
Aye.
Ms. Moore. Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
And I vote ayes, well, you have 10 ayes. All right, that item is adopted. Our next item is item number seven, Strategic Lending Benchmark Recommendation. We'll call on Mr. Jeff Dunn and Susan Illick and others from the Investment Division staff to discuss that item and present it.
Good morning. Today, we're going to represent, we're going to present a recommendation to change the leveraged loan portion of the strategic lending benchmark. But before I get started, I want to introduce Susan and Neha. Susan's been with the Strategic Lending Program for the last five-ish years? Six years. And, but she's going to be moving on to the private equity portfolio, and Neha is moving over from the fixed income portfolio and will be joining on our team. And thank you for Susan for doing the heavy lift on this recommendation. So, as I mentioned, 50% of the TCRS lever, benchmark is in the Credit Suisse Leveraged Loan Index. And Credit Suisse has been purchased by UBS, another Swiss bank. UBS has decided to outsource the administration of that index to S&amp;P Standard and Poor's. And Standard and Poor's has decided to change the source of the data, which includes many non-rated issues in that, in that portfolio. Therefore, the current benchmark, or the current index, doesn't look nearly like the old Credit Suisse levered loan that we've been using for, since we started this program back in 2013. So we surveyed peers, our consultants, Verus and AXIA, asset managers, to determine which loan makes the most sense. And we've determined that the Morningstar LSTA index is most like what we've experienced with the Credit Suisse levered loan index over the course of our portfolio. And so for that, we're recommending that we change the, to the Morningstar LSTA going forward, starting Ju, I'm sorry, July 1, 2025. Did I miss anything? Right.
All right, for those who may be watching this, this film of this meeting in the future, who are not investment professionals, can you give us a little layman's description of what a benchmark is and what its value is in terms of management of your portfolio? And you've described, you know, why you're changing, or proposing to change the benchmark, but you might try to describe that a little bit more in layman's language, too.
A benchmark's used as a way to measure the performance of our portfolio. We try to, we strive to outperform the benchmark on, over a cycle, which typically means, you know, three to five years or so. And since the strategic lending portfolio is invested in a lot of floating rate assets, the, the base rate changes as interest rates change. We want to have a floating rate benchmark in, to be measured against. That floating rate benchmark would be our leveraged loan portion of the, of the benchmark. So in this case, it's Credit Suisse Leveraged Loan Index, and we're recommending to make a change to the Morningstar LSTA. The other half of the benchmark is the, is the high-yield benchmark, and we use Bloomberg 2% capped, high-yield, US High-Yield Bond Index.
Okay, all right. So I guess it's a good deal of housekeeping going on here from the standpoint of investments to keep things up to date, I guess is one way to put this, so from a layman's standpoint. All right, are there any questions of Director Dunn and the staff about this proposed change in the lending, the strategic lending benchmark recommendation? If not, the Chair would move to approve the proposed recommendation. Is there a second for that? All right, we have a second, all right. And any further discussion on that matter? All right, seeing none, let's see, call the roll on the motion to approve, if you would, Mr. Wayman. Mr. Archer. Mr. Edmiston.
Yes.
Mr. Haynes.
Yes.
Chief Head.
Yes.
Lieutenant Jackson.
Aye.
Treasurer Lillard.
Aye.
Director Long.
Aye.
Ms. Moore. Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
I vote ayes, well, you have 10 ayes. All right, that item is approved, and thank you very much for your explanations and discussion here. All right, the next item is item number eight, which is our investment report. We'll call on Michael Breakbill, CFA, our Chief Investment Officer, and others that he has with him.
Thank you, Treasurer. Since we have, have a new group, may take a second and introduce. So my name is Michael Breakbill. I'm the Chief Investment Officer of the Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System. Just in summary, I've been here since 2008, worked closely with the Treasurer and with Boards since that time for, on, on TCRS. Daniel Cruz, running the slides over here, is my Deputy Chief Investment Officer. He's doing a bang-up job for us, and when did you get here, Daniel? 1999, so he's been with the system since 1999. And to my left here, Mark Brubaker is with Verus Consulting. And just a brief overview of what that is and what a consultant does. So, so my team, we obviously manage the, the investments of the portfolio, and we rely on different services of different groups and different oversight services as well. And so Verus Consulting is, is a, is a company within a broad group of investment consultants who work with us on, like you'll see today, on investment performance analysis to give you an overview of what's happening with investment performance. They help us with investment recommendations and allocation. Daniel has a presentation for lunch to go through how do we put portfolios together, and part of his materials are sourced with information from Verus Consulting. So, so they do all of that. They work with us on, on our investment policy, what current things in the industry, and all of those kinds of things. So, so, so for, for all of you who are new, that's where they fit into the, into the thing. So, so with that, I'll turn it over to Mark.
Thank you, Michael, and welcome to the new Board members. I look forward to working with you. As Michael said, my name's Mark Brubaker. I'm a Senior Consultant at Verus Advisory, and we've been working with, with Michael and team here and the Board for, for many, many years as investment advisor. And so what I typically do on a quarterly basis is I'll come in and, and provide an overview of the fund's performance, as well as some, some background on, on how the capital markets have performed to help put everything in context. And so if we start on slide four, and if you have our, the Verus presentation deck in front of you, or it's also on the screen as well, and I would encourage you, if, if there's anything that I'm saying that is, is not clear or sounds too, you know, too techie, please, please stop me, and I'll, I'll be happy to, to pause and explain. But as we go through, as we typically do, taking a look at the, the capital markets for, for the quarter and for the fiscal year, since June 30th was the fiscal year end, and you can see the, the Russell 3000 Index, which is an index that encompasses the entire publicly traded US stock market. It's 3,000 stocks, large cap, mid-cap, and small cap. It was up 11% for the quarter, and it was up 15.3% for the fiscal year. So a really strong equity market in this current fiscal year. And you can see right below at the S&amp;P 500, which is probably a more familiar benchmark to most, up 10.9% for the quarter and up 15.2% year-to-date. What that quarterly number, though, masks is really a pretty, a pretty volatile quarter in the US equity markets. If you recall, it was April 2nd when President Trump announced his tariff plan on Independence Day, and the markets immediately, within the next several trading days, dropped 12%. Not only were they down 12% from that point, but from the peak, which took place in February, they were down 23% during that time. Subsequent to that, as, as more clarification came out about the tariffs and negotiations took place, the markets basically rallied, and they, they were up, you know, over, over 25% from that trough, and that's how we ended up at a plus 11% for the quarter. The other thing I wanted to point to, if you look at the, the group of numbers slightly below, the Russell 1000 Growth Index and the Russell 1000 Value Index, and is that, those names might suggest, you know, growth stocks, which include tech, healthcare, and, and some consumer discretionary names primarily, or did very well for the quarter, up 17.8%, and value stocks were up only 3.8% during that time. And this, this is really a trend that has been going on for the past five years, where growth stocks have really dominated the market. You may have heard the term magnificent seven. These are the big tech names. They, they dominate the markets. They make up more than 30% of the total market cap of the, of the large-cap markets, and they've really been driving returns over the long term. So you could, you could certainly see that if you look at the longer-term numbers in growth versus value. Growth stocks have dramatically outperformed value stocks for all time periods on that page. The other thing that it's led to, if you look at the, and I'll just focus on the one-year column. The S&amp;P 500 up 15.2% for the one-year, and if you look at the, the Russell 2000 Index, that, that is a benchmark that consists of small-cap stocks. So, you know, the small-cap names that are not household names. And you can see there that the S&amp;P 500 outpaced that by about two times during the fiscal year. So that's another trend that's been in place, and again, I think it's a function of those magnificent seven stocks, the big tech names, that are really driving the markets in recent time periods. Going down to the International Equity Group, you can see there, and I'm just going to go down to the third index, the MSCI EFA Index. That stands for Europe, Asian Far, or Australian Far East, and that is a developed markets index. And you can see there, it was up 11.8% for the quarter, up 17.7% for the year. And that was, it, it's been a while since international stocks have outperformed US stocks. A big driver of that was currency. The US dollar's declined about 7, 7.7% versus the major currencies over this time period. And then emerging markets up 15.3%. I'm going to go, the one thing I did want to touch on a little bit, because of these strong equity markets we've had, valuations are fairly high right now. They're, the, the forward-looking price-to-earnings multiple on the US stock market is 22x. That compares to its long-term average of 17x. So I think we're cautious right now in looking at, at the US stock market, especially just in terms of the risk involved in, in the valuations where they are right now. The, the last thing I wanted to touch on, because it's just been such a big topic lately, is inflation. You can see inflation for the, the fiscal year was up 2.7%. That's CPI. The new CPI print just came out a few weeks ago, or actually a couple of days ago, up 2.9% year-over-year, and I think that number kind of came in line with expectations, and that combined with a, a fairly negative job report, I think opens the door for the Fed to possibly cut rates next week, and that's, the market's currently anticipating that that'll happen. So any questions on the capital markets before I, I move on? And on the next slide, slide five, we'll get into your total fund results, but before we do, this just shows you a snapshot. And this is really a great page, especially for new Board members to familiarize yourself with the fund, because what you have at the top, you can see the total assets broken out by asset class, and you can see you ended the fiscal year at $75.7 billion, which I think is a high watermark. Is that, it's a high watermark for the fund. And just to put that in perspective, that's $3.9 billion from last quarter, so substantial gain during the quarter. And then versus, versus where it was at the end of last fiscal year, you're up $5.5 billion over last fiscal year. The other thing on this page that I think is key, you can see in the next group, we have the target allocations to each of those asset classes. That's the policy allocation. That, that's the long-term strategic asset allocation that Michael and his team manage the portfolio to, and you as a Board ultimately approve periodically. And then you can see that we have the actual allocations relative to policy and then the differential. And so all of those are within tolerance range within the policy. Going on to, to the next slide, slide six, here we get into your fund results. I mentioned it was a strong year overall, and you could, and I'm just going to focus primarily on the fiscal year-to-date column on slide six, and you can see there that the portfolio is up 10.2%. And that ranks, that number in parentheses next to that return, 47, that indicates that you ranked in the top 47th percentile among your peer group. We look at this, your fund relative to a group of peers defined as public funds with assets in excess of $5 billion. And so that's, that's where you rank relative to that, above median for that time period. You did trail the policy index for fiscal year-to-date by about 0.3%, but longer term, the numbers look really good. If you look at your 10-year performance, you're in the top 21% of your peer group over that timeframe. If you go down, and just wanted to highlight a few things on, on the asset class level. US equity, there, you, you posted a very strong result, up 14.6%, ranks in the top 39% of the peer group and, and above benchmark. And it was really because of what I talked about before with the concentrated market. That was a really tough benchmark to beat in, in that, in fiscal year 2025. International developed markets, you can see there that, that, we had a struggle there in that portfolio, ranked in the, you know, the bottom quartile or the 78th percentile. And that was, a lot of the managers that had really str, produced strong results in years past had a difficult, had a difficult year in 2025. And, and one of the interesting things, when you look across the market, I talked about how growth dominated in the US stock market. Growth actually lagged in the non-US equity markets, and we have a little bit of a growth bent in, in the international equity portfolio. Again, you look long-term, and that portfolio's done very well over time. And then the other thing, I, I, fixed income, there, you can see you were up 5.5% for the, for the fiscal year. That ranks in the 82nd percentile. But the key thing is you're well ahead of the benchmark. You're 0.4% ahead of the benchmark, which in fixed income is actually quite good, quite, the high level of excess return. But the benchmark that you use and the allocation is longer duration than the rest of the market, which means that your fixed income portfolio has more interest rate sensing. which means that your fixed income portfolio has more interest rate sensitivity built in. And it was in a market where long-duration underperformed market-duration bonds, and the market-duration benchmark was actually up 6.1% during the period. So, so even though you ranked low relative to peers, it was really a function of your strategy, your long, long-duration bond portfolio. We have no concerns over that, as, as, you know, when, and we think over time that, that'll, that's the right positioning to take. I did, then la, I think, you know, given, given Jeff's presentation with the strategic lending benchmark, I, this is really where it comes into play. You can see on this page, we have the second from the bottom, the strategic lending portfolio, and the strategic lending benchmark. So that benchmark that Jeff referenced will now be part of that strategic lending benchmark that you see on this page, 50% of that, the one, and then 50% the high-yield benchmark, and that makes up that number there. But overall, the other, the other one last quick theme, you know, you can see your private equity port, performance, real estate, as well as the, the strategic lending, all single digits. Private equity relative to public markets has struggled. It's, it's fairly typical for, for private equity to trail public equities when they're, when they're running up, as they have in a strong bull market like they have been. So, again, private equity has been a really strong driver of returns over the long term, as has the real estate and private credit segment of the portfolio. And I would say that if you look at your fiscal year-to-date performance of 7.4% relative to the numbers I've seen, most of the numbers I'm seeing on private equity for the fiscal year are coming in, in the low single digits. So, on, on a relative basis, you've done, done quite well. And then, in the interest of time, I'm just going to go look at one more slide, if we could go to slide number 12, Daniel, please? And here's something we look at, again, I, I mentioned, I referenced the peer group. This, this scatter plot, each one of these plots on this scatter plot represents one of your peers. And what we have on the vertical axis is the annualized return over the five-year period, and on the, on the horizontal axis is the risk, or the standard deviation of the portfolio over that time period. And so what you see there, the red box, which represents TCRS, is total return. You can see that you, you rank slightly above on, on total return basis, but also slightly higher on total risk basis. And, and overall, that gives you a sharp ratio or a risk-adjusted measure that's right about median relative to your peers over that five-year time period. But overall, you've outperformed the policy index and the allocation index over that timeframe as well. So I think overall, the results have been quite good, and, you know, we're pleased, we have no concerns with the portfolio overall, but I'll stop there and see if anybody has any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Brubaker?
All right.
Thanks, Mark. Daniel, before you get out of that presentation, why don't we go to page five with the pie And, and again, just since everyone, since we have so many, so many new folks, the, the pie chart's really an interesting thing, because it shows the total assets and how things are managed, and it gives you a good sense of the overview of everything. So, on the top right, where it says strategic lending, and it's that dark blue slice, that 11.1%, that's Jeff's portfolio that he just talked about, who Jeff and Neha and Susan have been working on, and it's, it's 11%, and you can see over here, 11% works out to $8.4 billion. So it's a, it's, it's a, it's a big fund, and there are basically three people who work and manage that. And what that is, is it's basically investments in fixed income that aren't typical rated bonds. And so our, as Mark mentioned, our fixed income portfolio, which is the, whatever that color is on the left, the 18 and a half percent to the left, it has very high credit rating, and also it has a lot of duration, so it doesn't have much credit risk, but it does have a lot of interest rate risk, which Mark mentioned. The strategic lending portfolio, that dark blue, has very low duration risk, but it has a lot of credit risk, and that's the differentiation. You put them both together, as far as our fixed income, and they kind of balance each other out, where you have credit risk in one and duration risk in the other, and so they, they work together. The benchmark that Jeff mentioned is half of that, so, or, or all of strategic lending, which is 10% of the fund, so the, the approval you just made was half of the 10%, so, you know, 1/20 of the fund's benchmark. And each one of those pies has a benchmark that rolls up to the top. So the top-level benchmark of the fund is composed of a benchmark for each one of these individual sets. So, short-term in there, that little yellow thing, that's basically kind of cash and short-term investments. Then the next set of, of pies on there, total U.S. equity, Canada, international, developed, and emerging, those are stocks. So those are what you think about with publicly traded listed stocks. Carrie Green is over here, and wave your hand, Carrie Green. Carrie Green is my director, our director of equity. She manages each one of those. In those individual pies, in our U.S. equity piece, we have our internal team that manages all of those portfolios internally, as they do Canada. Canada's a passive portfolio that we replicate what happens there. International developed, that's what Mark mentioned, that we have a, a set of managers, they have, so those are all externally managed. We have manager there, we have a little bit of growth bias in a value market, so they've lagged a little bit. Historically, our international managers have done extremely well. If you look at the longer-term track record, they've done a great job. Our emerging markets equity portfolio is, is a little unique. We manage that internally. We have, we manage, we buy ETFs that are country fund ETFs, you know, South Korea, Taiwan, Brazil, India, et cetera. And what we have there is we have a particular screening process where we eliminate countries that are autocratic and corrupt, which is a unique thing, so we don't own in, in that area as an example. A lot of emerging markets investors would have a lot of China or Russia maybe, historically before that, before the war, so we don't have any of that exposure, and that, that's, that's a unique thing about our portfolio. Then I mentioned the fixed income portfolio. Again, we have an internal team who manage that piece, Marcus Klar and his team. And then we have the slice of real estate. Real estate, we have a team of three who help manage that, and that is composed of individual separate accounts. We have some REITs, and we have some individual funds that do manage it in a specific, particular way. So our real estate portfolio, again, $7.4 billion. And then finally, private equity, we have a team of four there, 12%, which is, you know, $9.1 billion. And Daniel Cruz, who are my deputy, he historically was our director of private equity, and I recently promoted him to that level, so he managed that portfolio for how many years? 10 years, so 10 years. And, and our private equity portfolio's had stunningly good returns over, over, you know, lately, it's, you know, it's, it's a hard thing, time for private equity, but it's been really a good thing for the fund overall. So I wanted to give you that quick overview of, of how the portfolio looks and what we do, and then if you want to go on to my, I, I generally give like a quick overview and of kind of what we see in the markets and economy, and, and then if you just go to the, there you go. So, just kind of an overview of inflation, growth, valuations that Mark mentioned, monetary policy, you know, big thing about the rally we just had is because people expect monetary policy to get looser, either Fed will be easier with money, that's part of the things. And then I have the TCRS portfolio as of last Friday. So, so then if you want to move to inflation, so, a big part of the cycle we went through, when we went through the COVID pandemic, and basically, we, we, there was so much fear of what was going to happen to the economy, they created this wall of money. It wound up flowing into different assets, and one of those assets was housing. And you can see that on this chart by the, the, on the bottom panel, on the red and the green dotted line, that's the year-to-year change in housing prices, and you can see versus his, history, it just soared, as we all know, but this is, kind of shows it graphically. So, housing was one of the key places where all that excess money landed as we walked through the pandemic, and, and it was one of the things the Fed had to cure. I mean, the Fed had to pull up, put on the brakes, because that could not continue. So you see the red peak, and then we, we have subsequently come off, so that's a positive sign that the economy is healing throughout there. We had a little mini bump, and it's already kind of rolling over, but it shows you kind of how that money flew, flowed through the economy and is slowly pulled back, and, and that part is healing. So inflation looks a little better on the housing side. On goods, we still obviously do not know what's going to happen with, with tariffs and how tariffs are going to impact good prices. But through the pandemic, one of the things that occurred is you had the wall of money, and then you had a lot of people with excess money to spend on retail goods, people were bored, they were home, they bought bikes, they bought kayaks, whatever, and so you saw these huge spikes in good prices. And also, the supply chains were all broken, so prices flew up because you wanted things and they couldn't make them. And what this chart shows is inflation going from the crude level at the top, down all the way to core consumer prices at the bottom. So it's kind of a, a flow, a pipeline, you know, the, through the python here of inflation. And, you know, we had our huge boom, we retraced a lot, because basically, goods prices actually started to have negative inflation, so they actually were falling in value, and then lately, obviously, they have ticked up a little bit. Overall, I, I don't yet see a huge issue, but it's something we're going to look closely at. Employment was also, oddly enough, like all these other impacts, this wall of money created a huge need for employment. And one of the measures of employment is this graph called weekly initial claims. And I would say that I have been disappointed with the initial claims, because I don't think it's given us good signals through this whole period. It has been too flat and too consistent, which is not the way the economy really has worked, but it's something we watch, we all, everyone in the marketplace watches. The spike, which I had to cut the top off, because basically, when the pandemic happened, everyone got laid off, that, I think, that was five or six million is what that number was, or four million, and, you know, you see our average now is in the 215,000 range, so it just is off the charts. But basically, as the number goes up, it means the employment market is weakening, and when it comes down, it means it's strengthening. We've seen softness lately, you don't really see it a whole lot in here, but we had, this last number came up a little bit, but it's something we watch closely. Here's a, a next one is one that really does show the change in the, in the employment market, which this is non-farm payrolls from the Bureau of Labor Statistics, and ADP. ADP puts together a private report. ADP always comes out on Wednesday, and then the non-farm payroll comes out on the subsequent Friday, and ADP gets a kind of a bad rap. A lot of people say, well, ADP doesn't mean anything, but they, if you notice, they track very closely over a long period of time. And, you know, you went from a boom that, when things are high at the top, that means payroll growth is very strong. And you can see that we have, the, the labor economy, the employment economy, has been slowly easing or getting a little weaker over that entire period of time. So the last four years, it had been slowly weakening. And the period we're in right now, it's, you know, down pretty low. A lot of people are, a lot of research we see is wondering about what that level should be, given the fact that our economy, our, our, our population growth is very low right now, and, and, and so maybe the number to keep employment flat is lower than it has ever been, but it's still at a very low level, and we had, as Mark mentioned, we had some very soft employment numbers that just came out, that created a lot of excitement and investment in our, our market, because it basically implied the Fed's going to ease going forward. And the next page shows you how the Fed, how, how they view where the economy is right now. They put together a, a report called a beige book, and the beige book, they take all the 12 Fed regional banks, and they consolidate their reports, their surveys. This is the overall summary that they have, and I just highlight the first sentence, "Most of the 12 Federal Reserve districts reported little or no change in economic activity since the prior beige book period." So basically, the Fed is saying, in our business contacts across the country, most of the districts, economic growth was essentially flat recently, but not down or anything, but flat. So, growth is soft.
Michael, would you explain in layman's language for everybody what the beige book is? I know what it is, but you know, I want others to understand.
Well, hopefully I can, hopefully I can do it, you know, basically, the Federal Reserve goes in each one of the 12 Federal Reserve banks, survey their banking contacts throughout, banking and, and business contacts throughout their district, the Atlanta Fed, the St. Louis Fed, et cetera, and then they consolidate those surveys into a monthly report that describes what they're seeing economically. And then, and the report has a summary for the whole country, and then it's got a, a summary, it's got individual pieces for each section. So for each Fed, like, you know, the Boston Fed, and there's a whole thing on what the Boston Fed said, the Dallas Fed, what did the Dallas Fed see? So this report is from their recent one, which was just last week, on, on current activity. So the Federal Reserve itself is saying, you know, economic growth looks pretty tepid. With all of the employment growth and the, and the, and the Fed saying economic growth looks weak, I also have a survey that we get on a, on a weekly basis. There's a brokerage group called Evercore, Evercore ISI, and this is a weekly service I take, that I get from them. They service, survey individual contacts once a week, put together a survey, and if you'll notice on the bottom right, it's actually improved a little bit. So, one of the issues that we face as investors and as people looking at the economy is you get scads of data, and a lot of it is conflicting, and this shows that. So you have other data that looks weak, this one looks pretty good. And moving on to valuation, so this is what Mark mentioned. You know, we are slightly overweighted in stocks, but we're overweighted mainly in international stocks, which are not as highly valued. This chart is from a, another research service called Ned Davis Research, and it is the median PE of the S and P 500, so they track this over time. And, you know, there are good reasons why at some particular times when economic growth or profit growth is strong, it should be higher, or if it's weak, it should be lower, but for the most part, it gives you a sense of, over our historical basis, how do stocks look versus, you know, their value? And you, you know, you can eyeball the chart, and at 26x the median PE, that's much higher than the median of, of 17.9. The recent spike, you see that recent spike well above 30, well, that's the pandemic, and that's basically, there, there are two ways earnings can go up, is it stocks can go up, earnings can go down, and that is a period where earnings just went down. So you had the pandemic, earnings kind of fell apart, and so valuations went up, not because stocks were going up, because the val, the earnings were coming down. The period we're in is opposite of that. Earnings have been strong, companies are doing well, but valuations are high too. It's, you know, not a, it's not something to run out and go sell everything, but it's something to keep in mind as an investor where things are. And conversely, on the next side, on yields, so one of the issues as a pension we've all faced for years is the low level of interest rates and what sure, or bond, bonds typically are safer than equities for an investor, there's more certainty of cash flows. But for many years, bond yields have been very low, so it's been very painful for investors to have certain cash flows. If you'll see through post-financial crisis, so 2008, '09, you can see where interest rates collapsed, and then the pandemic, they collapsed again, and then we had a, you know, the strongest or the harshest rise in interest rates that we've ever had from 2020 to 2023. But one thing that has done for us is that fixed income looks better now than it has in a while. It actually looked better in the fall of '23 than it does now, but it's still pretty good. So, so that's one area that for years, interest rates were so low that investors couldn't get a lot out of that, but now they can, and that looks pretty good, and that's an indication of that. Monetary policy is Monetary policy is what we mentioned as far as the the Federal Reserve. This shows you what the Federal Reserve has done through these years. Um, you know, if you go back in time to two thousand seven and eight, that five point two five percent, that was keeping interest rates high because of all the imbalances in front of the global financial crisis and 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 we got those finance, we got those uh imbalances uh uh squeezed out of the economy. There's, that's for sure. And then you can see the Federal Reserve reacted to that with the huge drop in rates. We were basically at zero for many, many years. Then they started raising rates again as the economy started taking off, and then we had kind of a another cycle through that. It looks like right now, short rates are are uh Fed funds about four and three eighths. Um, and year end is probably three sixty-nine as as I did this a few days ago, maybe a little less right now. So uh we see rate cuts going on into the uh into the fall and that helps um financial markets because you have less competition from the short end. So that's why people are so excited about that. And finally, uh, the whole total, uh, these are TRGT units. To back up uh 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 thirty thousand feet again, the Toll Pension Fund, Tennessee Consolidated Retirement Fund, is managed in this whole unitized group trust. So there's a big pool of assets that is managed in different, uh, there are different entities that have a little slice of that. But the vast majority is TCRS, ninety-eight and a half percent of it or more is TCRS. Um, so this is the total pool. As of last Friday, it was seventy-seven point six billion dollars. Uh, as of the close yesterday, it was seventy-eight point four billion dollars. So we've had about a three point nine percent increase in returns since June thirtieth, so it's been a a good period. Um, and, um, you know, I'm excited. It's one of those things you take and be happy with, even though valuations are high and you're kind of concerned. It's things have been working out for us, so. So that's the overview in a nutshell, and I hope I I haven't left anybody with too many questions. If anybody has any questions, please, please ask, so. But thank you. Thank you very much for your time, and I I appreciate you all being here. Thank you.
I just know every board member's got a lot of questions about this you want to ask, you know, and also uh, any questions, uh, Michael or the staff about these uh good reports that they've given? Yes, uh, seventy-seven point six billion is quite a number. Um, you know, because when I became treasurer in January of two thousand nine, we were at twenty-five point something billion dollars at that point. So here we are unofficially seventy-seven point six billion at this point in tentative valuation. Quite a difference. All right, seeing no questions then. Thank you, Michael, and thank you, Mark, everybody, and Daniel for your good reports here. All right, next item on our agenda is item number nine, which is the TCRS actuarial audit. And Mr. Wayman's going to speak with you about this and give you a summary of that. And I'll ask Mr. Wayman to again start with a layman's summary of what an actuarial audit is and why we do it, okay?
Thank you, Treasurer. Um, pulling up the report on the screen there. So uh, as most of you, as board members, may know, and and for those of you new, we have a actuary uh that we contract with USI that periodically um does an act, does an actuarial valuation on an annual basis. What that valuation does is it looks at the financial health of the plan, you know, see how well-funded we are, et cetera. And it also determines what the cost for the employers that sponsor the plans will be to contribute to TCRS to keep the plan well-funded and on a a a good path going forward. They also perform other duties such as performing experience studies where they look at the what's happened in TCRS's data over the last four years and they'll compare it to what our actuarial assumptions are to see if we need to make any changes to things such as our, such as inflation or our investment return assumption or how long people are living after retirement, et cetera. So an actuarial audit is performed by an independent actuary other than the one to review the work of the actuary the Treasury Department has contracted with. In essence, it's a peer review and and what they're looking at is they're wanting to see are the methodologies being used, assumptions being adopted, and the calculations being done by our current actuary? Are they easily replicated by an independent third party to make sure that they are reasonable and the that they're following actuarial standards of practice or the assumptions reasonable? And can they replicate um the liabilities and the cost uh that it's costing the the sponsors of the of the plan, TCRS? So with that, um, just kind of give you a little bit of background. We um the TCRS's funding policy requires that the actuarial valuation um or an actuarial audit be performed at least once every ten years to review the work of our contracted actuary. Uh, the gen, the Government Finance Officers Association within the last several years has updated that and said to do this once every five years. This is the fourth time since nineteen ninety-nine that we have had an actuarial audit performed. Uh, we selected Gabriel Roder Smith as the actuarial audit firm through competitive procurement to review the June thirty, twenty twenty-four actuarial evaluations for both the state and teacher plans for both the hybrid and legacy plan designs. And they also reviewed the actuarial assumptions that came out of the experience study that was done June thirty, twenty twenty. Um, so if you're, Sarah, if I can get you to go on to um slide B two, I believe, or page B two. I'm sorry, B one. Um, on B one, when you're looking at what the actuaries wanting to do, actuary, the auditor is trying to do is they're trying to look at three primary things for calculation purposes. The present value of future benefits, which is what is the current value of the benefits that have been um accrued by members? Second, you're looking at the actuarial accrued liability or the liabilities that exist as of the valuation date for benefits that have been promised and earned by members. And finally, the total normal cost or the cost to the employer for the next year of service. So their acceptable tolerance levels are if they can calculate the present value of future benefits within two percent of what our contracted actuary does, they, that's within tolerance. And then for the actuarial accrued liability and total normal cost, the tolerance level is within five percent. So if you go to page um B three, you'll see that um for the legacy plan for state employees and higher education employees, the present value of benefits, uh, the actuarial audit firm calculated the present value of benefits within a one-tenth of one percent. They were one-tenth of one percent lower than what uh USI or our actuary calculated, which is well within tolerance. The actuarial accrued liability was within negative two tenths of a percent of what our audit, what our actuarial firm calculated. And then the normal cost was within one percent. Going on to page B four, you can see similarly for the state and teacher hybrid plan that each, that the present value benefits, the actuarial accrued liability were both with less than one percent. Uh, the calculation by the auditor was less than one percent of the totals, within one percent of the totals. Um, so for the normal cost, they projected a lower normal cost than our actuary. But again, they were wanting to make sure that it didn't exceed five percent of what the our actuary calculated, and it did not exceed five percent of what our actuary calculated. If you go on to pages B five, to page B five, this is for the teacher legacy plan. And again, you can see there with the present value of benefits, the actuarial accrued liability and the normal cost, all of those were within the tolerance of one percent for the present value of benefits and five percent for that actuarial accrued liability and normal cost. And then finally, on page B six, you have the teacher hybrid retirement plan. And again, for the present value of benefits and actuarial accrued liability, it was within one-tenth of a percent for the present value of benefits, three and a half percent for the actuarial accrued liability. And again, they projected a much lower cost for the hybrid plan for the, for normal cost. Again, the benchmark was to make sure that it was not greater than five percent of what our actuary calculated, and it was not. Um, next, the report goes into the um actuarial assumptions and making sure that they're reasonable. So on page C four, um, GRS looked at the inflation component. And what they found, what in their surveys and their research, what they determined is that the range over a longer period of time for inflation was two point one three percent to two point seven percent. The current assumption for TCRS is two point two five percent. So since it was between those values, they said it was a reasonable uh assumption for inflation. On page C six, they reviewed the cost of living adjustment. Our cost of living adjustments in TCRS are capped at a maximum of three percent. And based on the fact that our inflation assumption was two and a quarter, they believe that the cost of living assumption of two and one eighth percent is reasonable. Then on page C twelve, we have an investment return assumption of six point seven five percent. They looked at both a ten-year and a twenty-year projection and said, you know, how frequently is it that we would get a six point seven five percent return? And it was right at the fiftieth percentile, which is what they would have expected. So they think six point seven five is reasonable. If you look at the next page, there's a um survey or a chart there that shows the National Association of State Retirement Administrators and how they have surveyed a hundred and eleven statewide retirement plans and what the return assumptions are adopted by those. And we are in the cat, in that third bar from the left there of those that are between six and a half and seven percent. And again, you can see that the vast majority of plans that they surveyed have a higher return assumption than six point seven five that's adopted by TCRS. And they've also looked at our salary increases. So we have a graded salary scale that goes from, I think, eight point seven percent from age twenty all the way down to a lower amount at age seventy, but it's graded over that time period to be average of four percent. They found that reasonable. Then on pages C sixteen and C seventeen, they looked at our mortality tables that we adopted. They believe that the ones that we're using are reasonable, the mortality improvement scale is reasonable, and also the frequency of retirement and terminations are reasonable. On page C eighteen, they looked at our actuarial cost method that we use to see if it's, you know, a standard that's being used in the actuarial community and follows the actual standards of practice. We use the entry age normal cost method, and they found that um that is a reasonable method and is one of the most used um actuarial cost methods that are used by public plans. Next, the actuarial asset valuation method. So we um investment returns are very impactful to the calculation of the actuarially determined contribution or the rate that employers pay to fund the plan. And if you, um, so we smooth out those investment gains and losses over a period of time so that we can have a more stable employer contribution rate. We currently smooth those um asset gains and loss, or the investment gains and losses over a ten-year period. GRS did, or Gabriel Roder Smith did find that that's reasonable. They did point out that that's, that the majority of plans use a five-year smoothing period, but they said that ten years is acceptable. And then finally, on the amortization method on page C eighteen, each actuarial valuation, there's gains and losses versus what is expected. So you know what actually happened versus what was expected. There's a gain or a loss there. Um, those gains and losses are amortized over twenty-year periods. And they felt like that that was a very reasonable period that will make sure that all the liability gains and and losses are amortized over a reasonable period and will be on a path for full funding. So they found that reasonable. And then finally, um, on page D one, they just reviewed in general uh the communication of the results, the actuarial valuation and the experience study. And they found that uh the communication met the communication standard under the actuarial standards of practice and was um easy to read and communicated adequately the information related to the valuations and experience study. And with that, that is an overview of the uh actuarial audit performed by Gabriel Roder Smith on the June thirty, twenty twenty-four valuations.
All right. Any questions, Mr. Wayman, in regard to the actuarial audit report? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the next item here, which is item ten, ARES and the data conversion projects update. Mr. Wayman also is handling that item too, so.
Uh, thank you, Treasurer. So.
You're going to need to give the layman's explanation of what ARES is.
Yes, sir. Um, so, so currently, we have a pension administration system that helps us uh calculate retirement benefits, calculate benefit estimates, uh, pay members their retirement benefit when they become eligible for them. And so our current pension administration system is referred to as Concord. Uh, that system is um been implemented and been used for more than ten years at this point. And the technology it was built on is probably twenty years old at this point. So we evaluated the current pension administration solution and the platform and the technology and made the decision that it would be best, instead of trying to update the pension administration solution, it would be best to um have, hire a vendor to help us develop and and modify a system, a new pension administration system for us. We refer to that project as ARES. Uh, it's an acronym for Advanced Retirement Information System. Uh, so again, this is going to, you know, all, each month, employers report their salary and service credit for all of the employees they have. That's taking that data from those employers, building a record for those members. That is tracking the assets and the monies that are coming in through those reports, posting an investment income. It's also the system where, as I said, we process benefit estimates, um, costs for people establishing service that they may be eligible to establish, calculating retirement benefits and making payroll benefit payments and all tax-related uh reporting that we have to do for our members uh or send to our members. So that project began in earnest in October of two thousand twenty-four. Um, just to kind of show you the size and the amount of people we have dedicated this project between um Treasury Department and personnel, whether that's TCRS, financial empowerment, accounting, information systems. There's seventy-five people dedicated to the project. Sagitec, who is the vendor that was selected to implement this new system, has a hundred and five employees that uh dedicated the project. So we have over a, we have approximately a hundred and eighty people dedicated to this project. The project's go-live date is April of two thousand twenty-nine. Um, and it's split into three pilots or phases. Pilot four point one is about demographics of for pe, for persons and organization, membership, enrollment, and contribution reporting. Uh, we have signed off on all final design documents related to pilot four point one. We had an in-person meeting with Sagitec and MBS and our team members on August twenty-seventh, where we went over the current status of the plan, what's being done to make this plan, this uh system successful and um, you know, what's next, what's upcoming. And we're also able to see some screens related to this, some customizations or how they've already started making it look, have a look and feel that we want for the system. Um, in December of this year, they're supposed to have a four-day onsite visit where they go through everything at that point. For uh four point one should be developed and ready for us to look at and review, and we'll do some verification testing. Then in January, we'll start on our second phase, which is four point two. This is really the the part of the system with all the calculations in it. So calculate retirement benefits, benefit estimates, cost for establishing service, making payments to members, et cetera, being this pilot. It's scheduled to last the design sessions about three months, and then they'll go off and start developing. Uh, Sagitec will then start developing and making changes to the system based on our business requirements. And then finally, pilot four point three uh will start in May of twenty-seven and in September of two thousand twenty-eight. And it's miscellaneous processes such as year end, adjusting records, uh, member annual statements, things like that, with a go-live of April twenty twenty-nine, as I mentioned. You know, one of the things that when they turn it over in September of two thousand twenty-eight, we're probably going to spend, we're going to have a six to eight-month period where we're going to do end-to-end testing, very thorough testing by all of our team members to make sure that the system's function is required uh before we go live in April twenty twenty-nine. So there'll be a six to eight-month testing period once that development ends. Um, for the data conversion, uh, in August of two thousand twenty-four, we hired a data vendor to help us cleanse and convert our data for the new system. Uh, that data cleansing and data uh management, data extract and and transitioning that to the Sagitec system being built for us called ARES, that's going to continue throughout the entire project. So during pilot 4.1, they were focused on looking at the data that needed to be extracted from our system to support pilot 4.1 and put that in, and do that. So that's been going well, I think, dedicated to that team. There's about 45 team members in total between, between Treasury, Sagitech and MBS working on that, there's about 46 people. You know, we've gotten through the pilot 4.1 and identifying all the data and have started the process for looking at, uh, pilot 4.2. And with that, that is the update related to the ARES and, and data conversion projects.
Okay, so for board members, I'll say you'll hear a lot more about ARES and the data conversion project as we go through it here and all that. And there'll be a lot of other opportunities to discuss this in depth as we move forward. It is, as Jamie described there, aptly a humongous task and, uh, will truly, uh, bring the department and, uh, the, the retirement system into a new era. So we look forward to that. Any questions at this point? All right, seeing none. Next item is item number 11 on our agenda, which is opportunity for public comment. Do we have any public comment, Ms. Wayman? Or we have, anybody have public comment that's here? We have no public comments, so let the record reflect that. Uh, item number, uh, 12 here is other business. And I'll point out at the bottom of the agenda sheet for today, we have future meetings tentatively scheduled for the Board of Trustees for December 12, 2025 and also March 13, 2026. So be sure and note those on your calendar. They are subject to change if there's any intervening issues that come along, but we'll keep you posted on that. And also I'll point out in this segment that, uh, we have for board members, uh, after each quarterly meeting, except for the December meeting, we have board training, which is our education of board members on selected topics. Uh, today's topic, uh, after the board meeting will be on asset allocation, designing a TCRS investment portfolio led by, uh, Michael Breakbill and Daniel Cruz and others on the investment staff that you met earlier. And, uh, so you want to be sure and attend that, not only because you get that stimulating discussion about asset allocation, which I'm sure will set you up for a really great weekend, uh, and everything, but also because you get the finest sandwich that eight bucks can buy, you know, we furnished for you sort of for lunch, so we don't, don't want you to miss that opportunity and everything. So see Jamie after the meeting here and, uh, and he and Sarah will take you to the room here in the building where we have, uh, board member education. So a great opportunity that should not be missed, okay? Anybody else have other business for the meeting today? All right, seeing no other business, uh, the chair will move that we adjourn the meeting. Is there a second? We have a second, all right? So all those in favor of adjournment, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. You guys have it and we are adjourned. Thank you for your service to the retirement system and the state of Tennessee and our people. Have a great weekend.